Welcome to the Eastbridge Water School Committee Meeting of April 25th, 2023. At this time, we're going to take a motion to open the meeting.
So moved.
Moved by Amanda.
Second.
Second by Gordon. All in favor?
Aye.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And thank you to EB Cam for always live streaming and recording our meetings. And first up, we have Lilia. Welcome.
Yep. So everyone's just getting back from break, trying to settle in for the last stretch of the year. I think everyone's looking forward to all the events that are upcoming and the nicer weather and wrapping up the bulk of the material to be completed for school. The Central School has been continuing to celebrate math this month. They have been participating in fun games such as choice boards and fun dress-up days. The dress-up days will conclude on Thursday, where they're going to dress to the nines, so they'll be dressing fancy. And on Thursday as well, they have their math night, so there'll be fun games and prizes and pizza for those who attend to wrap up their math month. And that's at 6:00 PM. At the junior, senior high school, there's a lot of fun things coming up. Graduation is something to begin looking forward to. For the seniors, they're going to be meeting with Mr. Clements on Thursday to talk about information and all the things they need to know for the end of the year. This week, the high school has been celebrating Acceptance Week, multiple dress-up days. Monday was, we dressed in red. Tuesday was tie-dye. Tomorrow, we'll be dressing in sparkles. And Thursday, everyone will choose a character from the movie Inside Out, which is a movie that displays a little girl's mind, all the emotions. So that should be exciting. And Friday, we'll come together and dress in biking gear. AP exams begin next week, so it's exciting. And then following the next week, looking forward to that. Prom is in just a few weeks, so that's also exciting. Junior prom is on the 19th and seniors on the 31st. Oh, prom meetings are next Tuesday for parents in the evening at 6:30 and for students at 1 o'clock. The last thing I had is the Springs Pop Concert will take place Friday and Saturday night, which is district-wide for grades three through 12.
Thank you. A lot of exciting stuff.
Yes.
Where is the prom being held?
The junior prom is in the Trail Room in Quincy. And then seniors, I'm not...
Granite Lakes?
I think, yeah, Granite Lakes.
Oh, great place.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, exciting.
Nice view.
Well, the holiday in in Taunton was lovely in 1990.
One in Mansfield, just.
Yes, it was excellent in 1998.
Standards have risen since.
Apparently.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And next up, we have Superintendent Warner.
So we have a letter from Nancy Hill, Council of Aging Director regarding the Eastbridge Water Junior Senior High School student work finishing a podium. In your, there's a letter to Mr. Ferrioli, Mark Ferrioli, who is a teacher here at the high school, and they took an old podium from the old high school, put it back together. And Rory Lonnegrin want to thank him, did a great job on it, and the Council of Aging will be using it. They put some wheels on it to make it a little bit easier to move it around, and they sort of recycled it. And I think it's, as you can read, it's a bit of history, and it's nice to put these things together and have the students be able to refurbish part of history, part of the old high school, and something that can be used by the community. So we wanted to just put that in. Some great news, I want to thank, first of all, Bill Clements and his staff, his administration, and all of his staff for the work that they did on the NIASC accreditation visit and all the NIASC work that goes along with getting this done and the preparation and all the hard work. I want to thank Dr. Williams for her support and working with the teachers, the staff, and especially the administration, helping them and giving them the support to get through the accreditation. I want to thank Jay Fallon for the important work that we do on the inclusion part of working with the accreditation. Want to thank John Shea, of course, for the financial support, the work that we do on how we do support as a school committee and as a school district and getting this done. Because this is a comprehensive examination of what we're doing here at the high school level. The coursework, the diversity, the equity, the inclusion, what types of programs that we're using, what kind of financial support are we putting in, what are there new classes going to be put in? The vision of the graduate helps us with our strategic plan. So this is a culmination of all the things that we do as a district, but really we need this accreditation at the high school. So I want to commend Bill Clements, his team, his staff, and the rest of, and everybody in the district who walked us over the line. Took us a while to get there. We certainly, you know, we had change in administration and principals. We had COVID. We've had things in between. But it shows that group and collaboration, working together, and a good community can pull anything off and get it through to the end line. We've got to the end line, and in this letter, it supports on what we're doing, our core values, our beliefs, our mission statement, and where we're going. And some of the due dates, May 1st, the school official request to submit a special progress report on May 1st, 2025. That gives Mr. Clements and ourselves a little bit of breathing room. This is something that is a living document, and that's the difference today than probably 20 years ago with some of these documents, just like the strategic plan. It's, we talk about it, we look at it, we review it. Mr. Clements will work on this with his staff every year on opening days and throughout his school committee meetings, or through his faculty meetings, he'll talk about this and talk about the report, what they've done, what's the progress that they're seeing in this, the five Cs that they're working on. And then we'll go into the accreditation cycle again in the fall of 2026. So, job well done. And I also got a side email from Kathleen Montegano. I was calling her Montego, but it's Montegano. She was, she's the Associate Director now. She started as our sort of overseer liaison. So she's been with us for quite a long time. I received an email on the side. She said that Bill Clements, his staff, and the district was very nice to work with, very attentive to the questions, stayed with the timelines. She was very appreciative that we made telephone calls or emails with questions, that we just didn't take it upon ourselves, that we asked the questions, that we did it the right way, and if we weren't sure what was going on, that we asked. So I think that, you know, Bill, to his credit, his son broke his arm last week, so he's at the doctor's office saying, I think they're setting it, getting a cast on it. So I wanted to share it with all of you. I know that he's not here, but he's very excited about this. I think he's taken a deep breath, which he should, and so should his faculty. So I wanted to just get that out to you. We've got six weeks on the way out from here. It's Fast and Furious now. This is a downward slope, and it's a highlight for us to walk out with the seniors here and to bring them home. This is it, as they march on to graduation and to post-secondary and where they're going to go and what they're going to do, whether it's the armed forces, whether it's going right to work, or whether it's going on to a two- or four-year college. We're excited for them. And like we've heard, the AP exams will be starting, and then that's it. And then the other exams and culmination projects in classrooms, and then they're done. But then is an exciting time for our preschoolers that will walk the red carpet in a few, a couple of weeks and be ready for kindergarten, which is a big, a big goal for all of us to watch our kindergarteners come back. We're still looking at enrollment. We're still waiting for those numbers to come in. But I can tell you, being over there yesterday, after April vacation, there's a lot of changes that happen. We hang up our own jackets. We walk in from our vans and our cars by ourselves, that we go through the gate all alone and can walk up the steps by ourselves, and nobody has to hold our hands anymore. And it's time that I can go down to the end of the hallway by myself without even a friend to use the, to use the girls' room or the boys' room. So it's exciting time in the mods. I can tell you, there was a lot of movement yesterday, having everyone come back. There is a big transition as you start to walk through Central School, and we're seeing that transition. And then there's the next transition. I was with the Mitchell School Principal yesterday, Mr. Puckett and Mrs. Dupre. They're getting ready for the sixth grade transition. They're putting more time into this transition than I think we've ever, or that I have ever been involved in. It was something, our goal this year is to put more time, more effort, more patience, and a concerted effort to what do kids need coming from sixth grade to seventh grade, making the transition, making it a little easier, making it more seamless than it has been. Matt and Deb, Mr. Dupre and Mr. Puckett doing a terrific job with their faculty on this. They also had a transitional meeting up here with, or they're having one with Mr. Clements and his staff. Then they'll bring the guidance counselors and adjustment counselors together, and I think they're going to start, we're going to start to see them over the next few weeks, coming a little bit more often, not just walking the halls, but sort of being up here, being more involved in the day-to-day. Listening to their thoughts on how some of this is going to work is exciting, because I know that we've let some, we've let some people down on the way the transition has gone in the past. And I think that sometimes a new vision, a new look, a new set of eyes on things helps in supporting a transition from sixth to seventh. So we're excited about that. And second and third grade is always a transition, but I think they're, I think they're ready and, or believe they're ready. Mrs. Byrne was, Mrs. Byrne's excited. There's still a lot of testing going on over there, and MCAS testing, as you know. We're in it for the next three or four weeks over at Mitchell School. So there's a lot going on in the district, and you might have driven in tonight. We've got girls' lacrosse out there. Softball was out there. I mean, there's a lot going on. And band concerts, music concerts coming up. The town meeting has been changed from, well, started on May 8th due to the state's budget, and they're still on the floor at the State House, and the legislation still hasn't really put out the final numbers. We have spoken about it. We're moving May 8th to the June 5th, which June 2nd is graduation, right? June 2nd, yeah. On the Friday night, and then the 5th is, the 4th, 2nd, 3rd, 4th, is the following Monday night, and we'll have the budget present, well, the town budget that night. So there's a lot going on in the next six weeks. So as busy as we are, I think this is an exciting time for the school district, for our students, junior prom, senior prom, graduation, and you know, preschool decay, and then all the transitional. The sixth to seventh grade is a focal point for us, and I know that we're watching, and I know that we're having a lot of conversations at this time. I'm excited to hear where Matt and Deb were yesterday. Coming right back after vacation, that is their number-one goal at this time. So. And I think the other, the last thing I have is that Mrs. Byrne and I spoke yesterday about the Central School project. Our first letters that we sent up was signed by the school committee chair, myself, and Mr. Seelig. That has gone in. It has been accepted. We have one more signature page, which is by the end of this week, well, by the end of next week. That goes in. Then we've got a month sort of off, and we're setting up, getting our team ready, a school, a Central School Committee, Project Committee going. We have talked to the PTO over there. We've talked to school council, and we've talked to our staff. By the end of the week, we are going to have a letter authored by both Mrs. Byrne and I to come out. And we thought we were going to do it before vacation, but we thought we would wait, we talked about it, talked about it. We said, let's wait till after vacation and then send it out and what it sort of details. It doesn't, there's no exact number of people on the committee. The only thing that I want to say is that it is going to take a lot of time, and it's in a lot of involvement. But Kate and I did talk a little bit about, you know, do we ask 20 people to go? And if 10 people can go on a Monday this week, and another 10, but we can all come together every other meeting, would that be good? And Desi said, as long as the key players to the, which is everybody, but as long as the administration and Kate and some of her staff are always there, somebody's got to always be there, so, to lead it. So I think it's important that everybody takes a look at it, whether it's a renovation project, which could be the end result, or it's a new project. So.
Thank you.
That's pretty much in my corner. Mr. Shea will be on the 23rd. We'll have him here for the report. And that's all I have.
Thank you. We're skipping over the finance report. And so next up is, does anyone have any questions for the superintendent regarding her evaluation? Flit?
I don't know what the best format is to go through this. Do we just flip through it, and people have questions, chime in? Or, I know I have a separate section of questions, but I just dotted some things down in the document itself. So what do you think?
That might be a good way to do it, because as we go through it, that might answer some of the questions that I have anyway.
So flip through and just go section to section?
Yeah.
Sure.
Okay.
I mean, some brief highlights. So we know Gordon and Lauren. Do you all have questions too?
I have some minor ones, but yeah, if we're flipping through, are we like starting by tab? Is that what we're?
Yeah, I guess we just flip through.
That sounds okay. Okay. All right. So any at-a-glance questions? I guess, there's just, this is, you know, this is just a comment. I think there's just some minor, like wording differences between the goals in here, what we have in this evaluation that like we will all complete, and we can adjust that, that's fine. And then maybe what was voted on? I mean, I think that...
What do you mean?
So like, I'm looking at the evaluation goals and evidence. This is the table, I think that was put together, with like our strategies, the resources, the updates. I think it's right after that. Yeah. I think there's just some minor, like, I think that the, the general concepts are there, right? Like, they're all generally the same goals, but just some minor, like wording differences. So just to keep that consistent. So we can, when we get an electronic copy of this that we all will fill out, I think we'll just adjust the wording accordingly.
So, okay. So if I'm following you, so the goals per the superintendent evaluation form include what we identified was create and manage building committee, Central School, I-ready use, attendance, impact on learning, hire consulting firm for equity audit, and create a budget that aligns with strategic plan. Those are generally the five.
Yeah. They're the same general ideas. It's just like minor. That, and I think these slightly differ from like what we voted on, I think, or?
So that, that's minor, I think?
Okay, yeah.
And I don't know if it's that we voted on them. So it's what we had discussed in our meeting, and I don't know if what we discussed in our meeting ended up at the meeting where we voted on the goals.
Oh, okay. Okay. So that might be.
So that's, yeah. So this is, and the main idea is there. It's just not.
Yeah. I think this is, that, to me, this is a note for our, for our committee and our subcommittee, especially for next year, to make sure that that's consistent, so we all have the same information, and that our superintendent also has the same information.
Does any of the wording change anything about, like, an outcome that was expected in terms of the wording or language for an outcome?
I don't think so. I think, like, a couple of the, like, I don't know. I write learning outcomes assessment sometimes, so like, understand isn't like a great verb, but like...
So this was in our materials for the November 8th meeting. This is what everybody voted on at the November.
Right. And that's the, so yes, you're right. That was what was in the meeting.
That's not what we voted on in our subcommittee.
But that's not what we voted on in our subcommittee meeting.
That's, that's what my, yeah.
These are like abbreviated versions of what we voted on in the subcommittee.
So that's what I'm saying. This is a note.
So in the future, which I'm also making notes about next time we set this up for next year, a couple of ways to change it for the better for everyone. And that's, that's on my list.
Yeah. It's nothing to do with the...
Yeah, not, it's not.
But did you, did we?
We can go over it later. It doesn't, it's not going to change the outcome of right now.
Yeah. Other thoughts on this first, or questions on this first tab?
Well, I just, the next section after what you just referenced was focus areas of the school committee goals, and went Central School, Middle School, High School, and had a lot of detailed information about risk assessments and different things personalized. No student name, but just the summary of events, so to speak, and, which is good information to have. I guess my only suggestion, probably on a go-forward basis, is these of themselves tell you some story, but unless there's a year-over-year or a trend, you don't know whether these are exceptional numbers or crazy numbers. You know, so good to have them, but I would suggest if we go forward, if we have, if it's possible, to have either prior year or maybe a trend, I think that will be helpful.
Superintendent, she wants to interject.
Hey, I'll do whatever you want, but each year, it's different. You're asking me different things. So, I mean, I could have put the trend in, but it was sort of like, what are you, you know, what are we doing now? And one of the things was MCAS. I just used that. We went to next-generation MCAS. We had COVID. It's a different, it's a different MCAS than it was before. We had to take two years off, and a couple of grades off. Now we're back into it. So it's just, it's spotty. But I mean, if you want, if that, if next year we were to come back, then I would certainly.
Yeah. And I think, to your point, I think because the committee essentially evolves every year with elections and different things, it'd be nice to have a standardized approach to it. Each year, they probably could be tweaked and tuned a little bit with the subcommittee and working with Superintendent Legault, but at least there's an approach to it that says, oh, here's how we do this. You know, if we got data, we'd like to have either year-over-year data or a trend when possible. Sometimes it might not be possible. And I understand, like, the example of the MCAS with COVID, that's a bump in the road. But it's nice to see it in retrospect, to see, oh, yeah, that was COVID. This is where we were. And look, we've built back since then.
And the only reason I use COVID is because they changed the test as well. So I mean, that's another, that's another issue. But the, the evaluation, and I spoke to the chair about this, for the last eight years I have been evaluated, there hasn't been a question that has gone year to year. It's been different every year. So when you asked me that, I was like, okay, which is fine, but you just tell me, you know, if we want to focus on MCAS, or I-ready, or growth assessment.
I think it's just a way to demonstrate change.
Sure.
You know, like, we talk about the budget and everything. We talk in our meetings about how the increase in crisis calls, and it's all, it's all outlined here. And I think this is a good time to illustrate that, like, okay, so that we've had this growth, and this is what it looked like in 2021, and this is what it looked like in 2022, and this is what we're dealing with now, or some stuff like that. So I think even when the question doesn't necessarily ask specifically for year-on-year data, it's, if you're saying there's a change, I think we need to see the numbers that demonstrate the change.
Sure. And I can, I'm going to pick out the at-risk calls, because that was something that I think was big on everybody. What I learned when we got done, and what I learned, and we learn this all the time, is we don't have one, each school does it differently. Each school records and does it differently, and it's very difficult to share that type of information from school to school without everybody seeing it. And how do we share it? You know, some people share it on a Google spreadsheet. Some people share it with this program. I talked to Dr. Williams about it. We talked to Jay about it. What programs are other schools using? Is there, is there, can we, can school brains do it for us? Can a component of school brains, can it do it for us without showing it to anybody else and having it a private screen? Do they have that capacity to do it? That was something that came up as I went through this. I was like, why, we can't just see it in front of us? That came up to me because we have built, and to Gina's credit, it has built a lot of the programming as we've gone on. We didn't have this, so we brought Parent Square in to do this. We didn't have the, this is a good indication of that. Okay, so I see it. Now, now we're keeping more track of it, or better track of it.
And correct me if I'm wrong. When I was reading through this and making my notes, my thinking was, this, this is under the umbrella of social-emotional.
Yes, right.
And so if that is the case, you can see these incidents or issues, but you don't, I don't look at it and say, well, is this, is this good? Or is it bad? I mean, I'd hate to have any of these issues. I'd like them all to be zero.
Right.
But that's not going to be the case. But, you know, without, again, some context, you don't know how to judge it, like, wow, even one of these is terrible. What are we doing? You know, so.
I can tell you that after speaking to everybody that I speak to, and I do my own work, and we continue to talk about this, Rebecca probably can even highlight this. We've gotten a lot better, Jake and Gina can. We've gotten a lot better as what's crisis, where does that fit in to here? What is this fit into, and what is this? That was something that's, that was something that stuck out through this. And how do we record the data? And how do we talk about the data? And how do we compare the data? We didn't do this before. We've done it, but we don't, we haven't done this. So now it's sticking out to me. I get what you're saying. You brought it up to me earlier, and I get it. My first couple of pages was an overview of, this is what I've seen, this is what we've done, this is how we're handling it. And I try to put the picture together of, you know, if this is SEL and all the things that we've done with an assessment and everything, and then you get to that last page where it says, we need more adjustment counselors. We need more money for a math teacher or intervention teachers. We want to continue the acceleration academy. So that's what I tried to do, to say, this is where we start, and this is where we're going. But I certainly understand what you're saying. Now that I see it, this would have, not that Jay couldn't provide that or the nurses, but the nurses don't have one system, the guidance counselors don't have one system, and the schools don't have one system. Now that that has come to us, and I think Gina, Gina and I spoke about it, and I said, why don't we just have that one? We can't just push enter? That's something we need to look at. And I think that the programming on that is so sensitive and secure of how we're sharing it, and I think that that was part, that was part of the issue. So we're looking into it and figuring out. But yes, I certainly hear you.
Well, I think that there's like a, and one thing that sticks out to me with that, with the wording, is that, and maybe this is just my particular on semantics and my years of like treatment plans and objectives, and like, let's be clear on what we're measuring. But if we're saying growth, and there's not a highlight of understanding what, well, what are you looking, what is growth, right? Because it's like, it could be a very subjective word, then we have six people assessing growth, how they define it. So I think that maybe just comes back to a reflection of language in writing goals, that if we're looking for a specific measure, we need specific language, and growth is subjective, unless we've been clear about that we're talking about the same growth, right, for that piece of it. But I also agree with what you said, that if we're, if we're using growth, it's like, okay, well, how? Right? Like, so what was, what were we looking at before to know growth? Right? Like, so what was we, what were we looking at before to know growth happened? And then it seems like, well, okay, what was before? But then my question for that is I found myself confused about what goal, and you might've just given some hints to it, is that what goal does this align with? Is this, you just dropped a hint that maybe it's, you were thinking about strategic plan? And that's right, um, budget and strategic.
All of it was in, all of this was in strategic plan. So this was a strategic plan, one.
Gotcha.
SEL and then two, and then three, always in the budget is going to have to produce, are going to have to provide funding to get adjustment counselors, to provide, to get a, a data, uh, assessment.
Yep.
Program. Uh, we may have to work with school brains. We may have to get them in here. We may have to open up school brains and say, how do we design this field?
Yeah.
If it is school brains that we're going to be using. Uh, we, we have a program that comes from one of the DSC, that the nurses use called SNAP, um, SNAP, is it SNAP? Is that the, is that what we want to use? Does that help us determine what we're looking at and how we're using it? So, but I mean.
If the data is the outcome so that we can say, this is the budget we need to support the SEL so that kids can have time on learning, then that makes sense. I think I, like, I found myself looking at it being like, wait, which one, which one does this align with, right? Like, I'm looking at that first page that, that breaks it down very simply. Which, all right, which detail, the, um, page three? The one that just says superintendent's performance goals. It's just like the simplest one involved for us in the beginning.
Yeah, that's at the very beginning of it.
So I, when I'm flipping through, I was like, all right, well, maybe this evidence is specific to this one, right? Like in, in wanting to make sure to piece it.
And that's why, I try, that's why I try to make it as easy as possible by doing the tabs and saying, this is what, this would give you the, it, it's very hard to find, this evaluation tool. Say it.
It's terrible.
It's terrible.
We have a discussion every.
The evaluation tool that they did for the superintendents, I have gone to every meeting we, Ellen, you and I went to when they said, do you want to pilot this? There wasn't a superintendent in there that said, oh yeah, this is a great tool. It's all over the place. It's very difficult if you're not a teacher or someone who does evaluation on a regular basis to follow it because you're going back and forth. Then I tried to do it simpler by doing a summary page or an outline page. And then I tried to do, like you, you, you mentioned this one. This is really for me to follow, but I put it in there to show you that I follow this and try to just, this was under leadership goal one, this is under two, and then I just put my stuff and then I come back and I trying to help you to get through it.
Yeah.
And that's what the, you know, the school committee meetings are for as well, as we go through the strategic plan to try to support for the year. So.
Yep.
I think too, one of the points that you just brought up, Becky, that when we get to the point of going through, um, all the documents for the new school committee member orientation kind of thing, one of the, there's a reference in there to a glossary of terms.
Yeah.
I think that will help if, if we can continue to build that glossary of terms. So if I'm sitting here and you say, uh, SEL, I'm, SEL, is that the kind of car you drive or is that, you know, I can look it up to the glossary terms. I think that'll help. It's only, it's only one part, but I think it will help.
I, I did speak to, I, asking other superintendents in some places and said, you know, how, how does your evaluation go? What do you? Some do like on a one piece of paper like this.
Yeah.
Somebody else does a three ring binder, somebody else, there's, nobody does it all the same way. But I did ask one and they said that they go to the back to the subcommittee, the subcommittee, they go back to the subcommittee review, then they come out and present. And the subcommittee drives what you want to hear, like on tonight. So Liz, I want you to hit three things.
I've had, going through this, I have some ideas on how, and, and part of it is asking you for more, almost like a, for us to hand you something basically to fill out. You know what I mean? That says, here's, here's exact, here are your goals.
Yep.
Here's what we need to see, you know, almost like, I'm not going to say it's going to be one form to fill out, but like just something more specific so that we get the material. We're on the same page. So we're, we get the material. Cause I'm, I'm kind of with Becky. I was looking through this and I'm like, okay, I see the strategic plan. That's in here for obvious reasons. And I see all of this evidence for the social, like why we need resources for social emotional learning. But it took a lot of kind of like, well, now where is this and what is this? So I think if we work together next year on just kind of formatting and organizing this differently, I think it'll be easier on all of us.
I'll do whatever you want. Eight, eight years in a row, I've done it differently, eight years in a row. And eight times it's been, do it this way. So I do it that way. Then it was do it this way. I did it that way. Then it was try this. So I tried this. And I have talked to other superintendents. And one of the things was, one of them said she goes from the subcommittee to the subcommittee and continues to work with the subcommittee throughout the entire process. And at the end, they come up and they go back to the team and they say.
More checks, like, so that.
Yeah. So that when you get to that tonight.
Right.
Because there's nothing in here, again, do I think, there's no I gotchas. You're not going to do it to me. I'm not going to come out and say, well, I didn't do this. I haven't been doing anything. I just, you know, I threw all this stuff together. That doesn't happen. But when we come out, it's a clearer form where you're saying, okay, we asked Liz about this because we know what diversity equity inclusion means. We know what we want the district to look like. We know what we want. We, we know we want a different hiring format. We know we want you to, to do some different things. We asked this question of Liz, Liz, how are you going to get this done? That's what I, and I asked somebody. They said, that's what, they did the same thing like we're doing, like we're trying to, and every year we're trying to fix this.
Well, and Gordon, earlier this year, we had mentioned basically doing this, not this, but having more intentional, not quarterly, but across the span of the year, kind of check-ins on this stuff.
Yeah.
And I think with our, our new timeline, I think we're in a better position to do that. So that's something that's also on my list for next.
Just like anything else, I think we want to build from year to year.
Yeah.
And I think one of the goals should be to produce something that's consistent. I mean, there might be tweaks and tunes from year to year, but the fundamental elements are there. So there's no surprises. And we can then look back and say, oh no, we, we used to be a seventy, now we're a seventy-two. Say we're moving in the right direction. These are things that are happening. That's an oversimplification, but I think that would be helpful for everybody, not only for us sitting here now, but for future people sitting at these tables. The only, I think next up is a strategic plan. And I think I, I mentioned this to Superintendent Legault after last meeting. I, I love that we have, we set it up so that there's a report on different elements of the strategic plan from meeting to meeting. What would be helpful to me, because whether it's the principals reporting to us or some key, some key member of the team, they're very astute, very knowledgeable, but I can't take notes faster than they can, they can speak. And so it would be helpful to me, I don't need them to give me a verbatim, but even just a bullet point, hey, this, these are some of the talking points we presented tonight that are in support of this particular part of the strategic plan. Just bullet pointed, just because I then try to put them away so that when we get to this point of doing evaluation, I can look back and say, oh yeah, no, I, I knew this, this is what our goal was and I saw, I was part of these discussions. I can see the action that was taking place in support of it. I got it.
Yeah. I ended up going back and through, I'd say this was this meeting and see the minutes for these meetings and stuff, but yeah, that.
One question I had, and it may be that it takes a couple of days to answer this, is I know one of the goals was, to create a budget that supports the strategic plan. So we have the strategic plan in here and we have the budget presentation, but I don't have dots connected. Like this is what, this is in the budget because of this part of the strategic plan. This is, I mean, some of it's obvious. But some of it, like strong instruction and stuff like that. Like where, where is that in the budget? I know it's there. But more explicitly, I think in here would be helpful for us.
Would that, would that be represented in like a line item?
Professional development? The amount of teachers that we're hiring. I could be more specific.
Moving to another tab or?
I'm going to out myself as the first timer again. When, when this is brought up and then Liz says, okay, I can be more specific. Are we saying Liz is going to come back before evaluation is done with more specific or we're saying in the future, more specific? Because right, we're, we need to evaluate.
I think in order to evaluate fairly, for the, for these goals, it would be nice to have, and like, we don't have to wait for the next meeting. I think an email or something would be helpful to just bullet points. You know what I mean? It doesn't have to be a whole dissertation or anything, but like this is, this and this, I think would be helpful. I just want to make sure the work that you have done is representative. You know what I mean? I don't, I, I don't, because if I look at some of these, I'm like, well, it's not here. I want to have the backup to justify.
Try to get specific. I, I mean, the budget is how we run the school system and all the supports and all the needs. And hopefully all the wants, we can get into that budget. But I can certainly try to get more specific with professional development and how many days we had professional development, what, how much we spent on professional development, who the people were that, that were at professional development.
Well, I think it's more important to focus on the budget that we've just developed.
Right.
You know, even, cause I don't, last year's last year.
No, but professional development is.
Right, yeah.
Like when you say, you know, how do we, how do we work on strong instruction? It comes from,
Right.
that, that comes from our professional development academy. You know, the people, the, the people that we bring in, the curriculum that we are hosting. So I, I can, I can line items those.
Well, if we're asking Liz to produce something between now and when we produce this current evaluation, I mean, to be fair, I think, you know, we don't need a list of names of people who attended the professional development.
No, she wants money.
Yeah, just high level stuff.
Okay.
Didn't you just do this though? Like we just had a meeting like a month ago where you said, here's what we've done. Here's what we want to do next year. It's going to cost this much more and here's the new budget. And that budget would align with the goal of what you're trying to do.
That's what I was just thinking.
I think that's fairly.
But it's not in the evidence. Like if I'm being evaluated for a job.
We had that meeting and she went over the whole thing for like an hour. So it's maybe it's.
In the budget presentation?
But the budget is reflective of the things we're going to add in the next school year to continue on the upward path. She's outlined all those things like new positions to add, new trainings. I don't know. I felt like I was.
But all we have, so there, there is the job description for the instructional coach that's in here and that's obviously, that's a, that's a dot connected. That's, you know, that's right here. But there's what, three focus areas on the strategic plan? I forgot. So all I, I don't need like a full, just a couple of examples of, you know?
I just think if we do every aspect of this in that manner, we're going to be working on this until 2025. Cause you can get so in-depth with this and maybe that's the way you should do it.
I don't, I don't need it to be in-depth. I don't, I don't need it. I just, a couple of line items that show evidence that the school budget supports the strategic plan. Cause you don't want to be line items, just like, oh, we are keeping these positions X, Y, Z in order to support learning gaps or something like that.
I think that also makes sure we're all looking at the same thing and connecting the same dots. Whereas I'm not looking at this and saying, this doesn't have this, you know, really specific where someone else, I think it goes back to Becky's comment about like defining things. And I think a, a map a bulleted list or something like that, that is Liz's version of connecting those dots helps us assess the same thing, start from the same baseline, I guess I would say. So I don't, I don't know. I agree. I think that would be helpful.
I just, we kind of did this last year where when we got to the end, we didn't change it on Liz. But we definitely added things because she's here every two weeks and she'll answer any questions we have. We can go to her with any questions. And we get to this part and it's like, what about this? What about this? What about this?
Part of the open meeting is us figuring out new stuff together, right?
Sure. But I think we have to make sure we're being fair. And when information is invited for, you know, many months in a row and it's there for you, you either choose to go along with it and say, this is what I thought was being done and it's being done and it's been effective this year. Or you had problems with it. If you had problems with it, I hope those questions were asked throughout the year and not just in June when you're doing the evaluation.
See, that's not, that's not the point of what I'm asking. The point of what I'm asking is just to have the evidence in the binder.
Okay.
That's all. Like I told, I, I know it's there. I know we did the work. I just want it, I want to be able to open this and say, and look at the list of goals and say, all right, X, Y, Z, done, done, done. I don't want to have to remember on March 26th, we went over the initial budget presentation and we talked about X, Y, and Z.
So is it acceptable to bullet, make a bullet list?
Yeah. And I don't even need an exhaustive list. I just need like a couple.
I'm just going to, Lauren, I think a couple of years ago I did a bullet list. It, I mean, and it might've been before. And then someone said, that's not enough. So.
I could come in next year and give you the most ridiculous way to do this. Probably do it to be, to be nice. And then a year after be like, well, that was ridiculous. We can, it sounds like it's been done eight straight years. I don't want to do it nine years. I don't love this format. I didn't like the one last year either. I'm not going to tell you to do it again because I, I get what you're trying to do here. Keep it together. And I'm sure the information's here and when I comb through this, 110%, I'll answer that and probably go insane, but.
To that point, that's what I think Gordon and I were talking about a few minutes ago, was to, to simplify this, to make it more, like we have the goals, but then we say, okay, to illustrate this goal, we want to see X, Y, Z. To illustrate this goal. That way Liz knows exactly what we're asking for, throws it in the binder over the course of the year. Here you go. And we're all on the same page and we're done. And we haven't done that.
No, I know. And then.
I know. We have a binder and it's all here, but.
This is no good. Let's do it different next. And that, that's fine too. I mean, this is a work in progress. I just want to make sure we're being fair to what we're requesting.
And it sounds like it's a par for the course for all superintendents, everyone that are, have evolving school committees, that they are writing for their supervisor, right? Like, like, oh, this is that style and this is that style. I think where I out myself completely lost is right, we have a specific tool to evaluate Liz. So we, there is a page that has, hey, here's the goal. Okay. We look for the evidence of that goal. And then we have this specific format and I like, in my very concrete brain, I guess, I'm like, okay, what happened for one B?
Right.
Like, what, like one B, right? Like, and then what happened for one E? Because the strategic plan, while we've used it the whole time, is not solely what we're evaluating Liz on. That's the strategic plan. So there's more to this whole conversation than a strategic plan.
I'm sorry.
Am I understanding correctly or have I completely missed the boat?
Correct me if I'm wrong. We have the flexibility to put anything in here that we want.
You don't have to, you, you do not have to use this evaluation.
I thought we have to produce, we have to send M A S C of, or whoever we send this to, we have to send them the finals, the summer to, this is what we came up.
We send everything up to DSC. We don't, all we send is yes or no.
Okay.
But what I'm saying on this is, this is what DSC came up with. You don't have to use this. This is, our M A S C came up with this. And DSC, they came together, they said, oh, this is a good format. Some people use it, some people don't. Some people go by school committee to school committee. Some people use, uh, a smart PD form. Some people use this form. Some people came, created their own. You know, I spoke to a, a very close superintendent, maybe one or two districts over. Now, they write, it's what I did this year. This is blah, 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 blah. We worked well together, blah, blah, blah.
And to your earlier point, that could change next year.
That's what I'm saying. It's just, I mean, we, you could put in a policy. We want this to, I mean, if you want it in bullet format, I understand what you're saying. I can.
Yeah. What would be easier for, probably for Liz and for us as evaluators is to say at the beginning of the cycle, is to say, we think teacher turnover is key. We think attendance numbers are key. We think graduation rate is key. I mean, those are specific numbers that are easy to track.
We do that and when, and when we come up with the goals, we sit with Liz and we say, okay, what do we want to see this year? And we come up with it together.
And essentially that could be the review. And at the end, we all say.
It is what the review is supposed to be. That's why it's in here.
But then we get into one B and one E and all those ones under the generic form. So I, I, I don't want us to bog us down here with this, but certainly looking into next year, again, working with Liz and come up with what we think is a reasonable target, uh, format and that we can evaluate and say, oh yeah.
and that we can evaluate and say, oh, yeah, this was good. This still is a work in progress. This was terrific, whatever it might be. Makes it easier for everybody, so.
I think it'd be, I, I, I don't know anymore. Like, I really don't know.
So, here's what I know.
I don't know if we go to subcommittee to subcommittee to subcommittee. And every night, I come to see you once a month, and we say, okay, we're gonna work on this goal. Liz, what did you get last month? Bring it to you, put it in the binder, then sit with you again. And it, because I don't, I, I'm getting confused. Because you ask me 1E and 1B, and I get it. I, this is confusing to me. I'm trying to hit all these areas, and I'm giving you a snapshot of a day or of a week or of a, of a whole year. My year is, I umbrella everybody. I'm in everybody's office every day, and at schools at least three times a week, if not more. I'm watching, I'm seeing, and I'm trying to relay to you. I'll do what you tell me to do. I'm trying to capture it by saying, this is 1B. Like, I might not say the exact words of 1B, because to me, I don't even know what 1B says.
Which makes sense to me. So, 1B has all these like, oh, blah, blah, blah words, right? Like, okay, insurance practices, all settings, higher expectations regarding content quality, effort, work, 65 other words. We're talking about iReady.
Right.
Right, like, so you can make that dot and that link, right? We're looking at, okay, this is about the high instruction. This is about learning styles and making diverse things, right? Like, you can put some of those things together. And I think this conversation is super productive for the future. I'm very mindful and just pardon the abrasiveness of it. We have to evaluate Liz on how it is currently. And I can, I would love to, can we move that conversation?
Yep.
Right, like, we, because we can talk about what to do later, later. Right now, this time is set aside for the current style, the current model, the current way. I apologize for my directness with that. But also, we know how we all operate, and we respect each other's thoughts and feelings. And we will talk about this until 9:00 PM, and we won't ask Liz questions. And I don't wanna lose sight of, well, what are the questions on the current evaluation?
Right. I agree.
Okay.
I can give you an overview of the year and go right through it. I probably would answer some of your questions. But go ahead.
Yeah, however you wanna proceed, it's fine by me.
There's a next question. I, only because it's a specific question, so it's easy. The attendance data. I saw teacher attendance data. Do we have student attendance?
I have last year's student attendance, but up to mid-year. So, I was waiting, I don't have it as current.
For current.
For current.
Right. Okay.
But even last year helps.
I can, I can put that up there.
Yeah, I think last year, yeah, I think that would be helpful.
So, the goal states to, to understand how attendance affects teaching and learning instructions. Do we have that?
Yes.
Yeah?
I think I put it in there by stating that we know that having a certified teacher in every classroom and providing support to that teacher in professional development is how we, how we keep teachers engaged and up current and what we need them to be a professional in the classroom. We also know that we are having a teacher shortage, and we're working on it. We all, and maternity leave, as much as we love that, and we want people to have families, having a teacher out and putting a sub in is not like having a teacher in front of them. So, we do see, do we see learning loss at a great rate? No, we do see some. I also put in there that we want every teacher to have a quality relationship with a, with a student. You know, at the high school, you might call it advisor, advisee. At, you know, we want a, an adult to have a relationship with a child. Asking them how they feel. How are you doing today? Is there anything I can help you with? Does that happen 100%? No. And that's something we are looking, we are working on from pre-K through 12. Sometimes it's a little easier at the elementary grades than it is as they, as they grow older. Kids tend to be, hang out with their peers and their friends. So, we know that. We know that kids have, they don't wanna come to school. They skip school. They have a fear of coming to school. We work on that. We work with them with our adjustment counselors, our guidance counselors, our school psychologist with that.
I think that's, you do, you mentioned that having the teachers. I think we're missing the student piece of it. Like, what are we doing to?
I think I put that.
Keep kids coming to school? You know, it's obviously a problem. It's not new.
Right.
It's not specific to us, but what are we doing to solve it in, in our?
I think, I might have mentioned that in the Acceleration Academy. So, I mean, when a student is, doesn't feel that they're doing well, they sometimes tend to shy away from a class, shy away from school. They don't wanna be engaged. Doing the Acceleration Academies has truly helped in that. We see a lot of the students that might have been, she said, I don't understand this. They've come, they've enjoyed it, they see a different perspective, they get a different teacher, they get, they're with different peers, and it was fun. So, if we can make learning fun, we think that we can see some of that.
Are we onto the budget tab? Are we still finishing up on the other one?
Good. Next.
Moving on. The only question, obviously, I know the budget tabs, we saw that in the presentation and all. Just one question. The, one of the pages is, references the five-year instructional coach. And the, we would pay for that out of school choice, I understand that. But the role of an instructional coach, what role do they fill? Where do they show up? And is it across all schools? Is it school by school?
This instructional coach will be housed at the junior, senior high school. We hope that we'll be able to continue to work that model throughout the district. It gives another set of eyes, and it's an instructional coach. It is not an evaluator. It is not another administrator. It is, could be a collegial peer who is working on, who has really embraced our universal design and does a really great job. And we're trying to get more, more faculty involved to be their own instructional coach in the classroom, so we can send a coach in to help them, provide them with the support.
So, the instructional coach obviously works with teachers, which is what I assumed.
Yes, yes.
Okay, great, thank you.
And I believe you have that, you have the job spec.
Yep, you do. Yep. No one else has. I, I read the, so the response to intervention instructional coach job description, is that the same, same category?
Yes.
It's just the response to intervention, where does that come in? That, if we, if you identify, or a principal identifies an area, they call in the instructional coach to help that?
Well, it may, may not be the principal. It may be, it may be the teacher. We hope at the beginning of next school year, we hope at the beginning of the school year, with our instructional coach in place, to be able to say to the junior, senior high school, we'll use them there, that to the staff will say, we have Gina Williams, and she is an expert or a housed-in expert, resident expert in universal design. And she will go out and support Amanda in her classroom. It doesn't matter if it's math or social studies, science, or English. It's about, everybody learns at a different style, at a different pace, different timing. We want this person to use all-inclusive practices and be able to get in and give, give strategies on how to reach all six people or all 10 people or all 15 people in this classroom. And this person will offer the strategies that we have and that the, that the Academy, Professional Development Academy has brought through with the universal design and be able to support the teacher into using those supports for each student, to reach each student.
Yep. Okay, thank you.
And again, that, that position is housed or would report to Dr. Williams.
Okay.
Anybody else have any more questions?
I don't know, the page is on, the page that's just typed, it just says, to close the gap and focus Area 1 in Eastbridge, Florida, for the schools' contracts with several companies that provide interpretive services. Is that Focus Area 1, is that, I don't know what that refers to.
I think this might be out of, I think this might be out of position. It was under Special Education, I think it was on the second page. And it was really just talking about what we've done with special education inclusion. Yep. Bringing in, so, one of the questions was in finances. Financially, how are we supporting? Well, we bring in interpretation services, we work with translation services. With our ELL, we had, and this goes on the second page, I think it just, I think it was probably me, because I was trying to fit things in, so it would be.
Where is the binder?
Right there.
What it is, is talks about our, it talks about our inclusion classes. What are we doing?
Yep.
How are we supporting them? Who's going in? We consult, we have consultants come in, we have social workers, interns coming in. We have a BCBA, we have one BCBA in the district. That was supported by Jay Fallon in Special Education. He came to me, he wanted to get a BCBA, which would help to behavioral work for students in the classroom, to help them to adjust to classroom instruction. And then to hire another one would be extremely expensive. So, as you remember, we went to the North River Collaborative. We get interns that do not have their, we, getting their hours in to, so they can get their full certification in BCBA. And we go out, and like, last year, we had three. This year, we've asked for six, because we know we need the supports.
That, that page goes in after the 2022, 23 SOA plan progress.
Yep, that was mine.
Now it makes sense.
That was me, it was probably I, when I was doing all the binders, I might have gotten mixed up. So, that's my fault. Because probably those were my notes.
Yep.
They just got in there.
I just, on the report for North River Collaborative, social work, I just interpreted this, the numbers, I can read the numbers, but I just, this is, like you said, in support of helping our.
We talked about getting, we've talked about getting more adjustment counselors. And to support an adjustment counselor would be, if we were to get three more adjustments counselors, you're looking at $300,000. So, can we afford that? Would it be, can that, can the budget support it? Will the town support it? So, we did, we have an adjustment counselor in each building right now. And what we did was we contracted with North River Collaborative with those who have this degree but need the hours to receive their certificate through DESI. So, they come and they work for North River Collaborative, and they come here for us. They work under Jay Fallon. He places them in the schools. And we found out that, like, last year, we had three, three of them, one in each building. One, you know, they might here be Monday, Wednesday, Friday. Somebody might be here Tuesday, Thursday. Somebody might be here Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday. Jay and I spoke about that. We asked for six, so that we have an adjustment counselor in every building, every day, along with our own, which they are ours, but they'll only, they're interns. So, they're here two to three, two to three days. Once in a while, they'll be here, all five. But other than that, we're in and out. So, this was sort of showing you the need for the budget to support, because of all the at-risk and the referrals that we have.
Okay. I don't know about anyone else, but I, I needed help to understand the curriculum data sheet. I don't know if you can help us with that, Dr. Williams or Liz? I just wanted to make sure I was following. Obviously, grades, I know, but.
So, this looks like the curriculum resources that we use at each of the grade levels for each of the content areas. So, like, Wonders is the name of our reading program that we use, grades K to 5, ELA.
Got it.
And then Study Sync is the text that we use at the middle grades.
Okay.
And then if you look at math, those are the programs that we're using.
In each grade.
Yeah, so, I'm not sure why some of them are empty. So, like, kindergarten also uses Ready Classroom. This might, this might be.
I think it's just the way it printed.
Yeah. So, Ready Classroom is being used K to 6. The assessment, iReady, which is by Curriculum Associates, is being used K to 8, but seventh and eighth grade use Vision as their mathematics program. They don't use Ready Classroom. This year was the first year that they started using diagnostics. We switched to Ready Classroom K through 6 because of the alignment between the diagnostics and the MyPath supplements that they have.
And the only reason I put this in here, because there was really nothing on what do we use for curriculum. It was more or less, this is what we post for, for our curriculum, this is what we're using. This is what we support. And it was, oh, go ahead.
No, I assume the years are the last time it was reviewed?
Yep.
Yeah, okay.
When it was adopted?
Or when it was, yeah, sorry, adopted.
Yeah. Yeah, I just was showing, this was curriculum, I sort of put like a lot of things in here that, that just showed that we are, this is what we do. This is what I do, or this is what the district does.
I know in the next section has the, the results from the data conversations. Shows you by, I think there's four classrooms in the, is it in the middle, middle school or central, or central school?
This was a, so, Mitchell School has data meetings all the time. Are they, I guess, is it tri-weekly, once a month?
They'll do them three times a year with the benchmark testing that goes on with the iReady.
So, when I spoke to, when I spoke to Mr. Pocat, when I speak to them, I say, hi, what do you talk about with your teachers? They said, you know, our drive is what's happening instructionally, what's happening, what are you seeing? So, we sit there, and he told, so he told me a story. I was in the second grade, this is what happened. And he, so that's, I wanted to show, what I'm showing you is that our principals are having in-depth conversations with our teachers about their instruction. What are they seeing with their instruction? What comes out in the assessment? So, when the teacher gets to see what has happened through the assessment with their students, they can then go back, if you read through it, then go back and say, what do I need to adjust in my teaching? What didn't I go over? Maybe I need an instructional coach to come in and help me. I need your support. I may need whatever supports. That's what I, I mean, when I go in, I talk to the principal, because that's, the principal oversees this. They oversee their teachers. So, when I go in and talk to, I'm asking the principal, what are we talking about in fourth grade? What are we talking about in second grade? What are we talking about? But Matt was, this was a third grade, I think, classroom. I said second, but a third grade classroom, I think. He'll go in, and I said, you know, tell me a little bit what you saw. And he, as you can see, there's no names up here, there are three different classrooms, three different teachers. You can definitely see, there's patterns, no patterns. What's he seeing? What are we doing well in? What are, where are the strengths? What are the, what are the positives? What are the negatives? And what do I need to get in there and support? As the principal, then he can have those conversations. And if he needs help, he can reach out to us, or he can reach out to Mrs. Dupre, or, you know, how are we gonna address this? Or we go get another teacher that can help. And the intervention teachers down there, they work with the students. However, if we need help and to adjust somebody or work on universal design or work on how the strengths of this classroom that might not have been in this area, do we need to go back and do it again? Or, or is the teacher not going into enough depth with the instruction? That's what I was just trying to show here, is these are the conversations that we have with teachers by looking at the data, then coming back and saying, we need to change something here. And we found that. We found it with some of our curriculums in the last couple of years. We might have done something different. Where we position it in the year, what's the format of the year.
I have to say, I think that, that answer, hearing you say that, again, my concrete brain is like, oh, okay. I understand what Liz is working on with the staff for the iReady assessment and how we're measuring growth and how it's being looked at in the classrooms and then being spit back out. And I know we've had school committee meetings where this has come up, right? But in like this evidence conversation, I was like, oh, that makes sense, right? Like.
That's why it's much easier when you ask me a question.
Right? Right?
Because.
Because we can see, okay, you tried to show that, right? And then this goes back to your dot comment, right? Like, I'm like, oh, okay. Well, now she was trying to connect a dot. I didn't know you were trying to connect a dot with that piece of it, but I hear you connecting the dot. That makes total, that makes sense to me now, right? Trust me.
And that's why we're having this.
Yeah.
Are we up to the central school? Which is all that's going on with that? And my understanding from all of this, and what you mentioned earlier, there's no committee yet, it's in the process, getting there.
So, right, there's a timeline.
Yep.
And if you go to the timeline, it'll tell you how to do it. And I can tell you, after sitting with DESI, and our liaison Nina, Nina Papakatas, our project coordinator, she is telling me, slow down, do it at our pace, do it on our time, do it with us. Don't get ahead of us. Don't get behind us. Stay right with us. So a couple of weeks ago, and I said, I'm going to put out a letter and say about, you know, let's get this. I went to, at Central School, I met, I was at her, Mrs. Byrne's faculty meeting, I stayed for the PTA meeting, and then we had school council. We met with teachers, or, some of the parents that go to those meetings, and then we met with the teachers. I put it out there. I told Nina about it, and she's like, okay, pump the brakes a little bit, let people get it out there. Because what happens, what they find is that if they go too fast, people get nervous about hearing about new projects and buildings, and then if something goes wrong, and this and that. So she's like, just pump the brakes, and then after break, and then I talked to Kate, and we thought, let's co-author a letter for this week after break, then people have a chance to see it on the way out of the schools. And, and the school building committee does not have to be done until June 2nd, so it gives us six weeks. If I put it out a couple of weeks ago, now people would be like, am I on the committee? Am I not on the committee? When are they starting the committee? Are we having a meeting on the committee? Is the committee tomorrow? Should I, should I send my name? So it was sort of, they're helping you, because they've gone through this so many times with other school districts. So we'll put that out, and hopefully, but the, we have done the initial, we've, we've done all of our work all so far, and the initial compliance, I signed it yesterday. Kate and I went through it, I sign it, Charlie signs it, and then that goes. So we're right on, right on target.
I went through this survey, which is very interesting, on the superintendents.
Yep.
Thank you for sharing that with us. What the heck does EAB stand for? I couldn't find it anywhere in the document.
Educational.
I guess it doesn't matter. Education what?
It's educational assessments and something, I forget.
Doesn't, doesn't matter, I, I see the survey, but I was, I was just curious, I was going through, and said, nowhere here does it define that.
I got every acronym in the book. Yeah, it's a, it's a consulting group, it's a, it's for superintendents, it's a high level, it's, say, for high-level executives that work together, especially superintendents, and we, I can join a webinar with just superintendents that are across the country, and you talk about, I can tell you right now, everybody's talking about the same thing. Diversity, equity, inclusion, that's a hot topic across the country, teacher turnover, not getting teachers, not even teacher turnover, it's, there's no teachers. And early college is now the big one. It's how do we get kids to go to early college? So I think I joined this three years ago. I have one more year with them to join, I think it is. It's a five, I think it's a three or four-year program, and you join upfront, and I've been with them, I, you know, I do their webinars, I do their surveys, and I get this information. So I get to see what's happening in a survey about, you know, this one was about superintendents. So I just wanted you to see it, that this was their latest, and I just did one on early college. Are we offering it? What, how much do we offer? What is Massachusetts doing? You know? Then you'll see what North Carolina's doing. North Carolina is a big, early college state. We're sort of following their, their model in Massachusetts. But they don't have unions. So there's differences in how we work with our unions compared to in North Carolina. So. But this is like, this is my own, this is my profession, this is part of my professional development that I do, on my own.
Yeah, you give us something last year in the.
Yeah, yeah, I do it every year. I, I mean, I, we're, I'm involved in it. When I was in NSIP, they, they, you know, had said, you know, you should do a PD for yourself every year. This is one of the companies that we work with, many of your colleagues do. So I've been working with them, I do their surveys, but I do do their webinars when it's something that is of interest. Not everything is of interest, not everything is, works for us.
And if you sat doing webinars eight hours a day, we might have other.
Yeah.
I'm just kidding, just kidding.
Yeah, but, I mean, these are, I mean, there's, there's a lot to pull from.
Yeah.
So.
In regards to the DEI stuff, Liz, I know one of the things was talking about the equity audit.
Yep.
And I have some recollection of you, and I think you shared some of this in evidence of, of, you've had conversations, we know you've had conversations.
Yep.
You've looked into doing this audit. I think if I remember right, you've gotten some different feedback about hold off, or, right, like, some, maybe DESI was saying, hey, don't do that yet, or wait for this. So what was that again?
Okay, so, matter of fact, Dr. Williams and I spoke today, tomorrow, I believe she's meeting with Julia Sheehan, who's a part, who's our liaison for the EBCC. And they're a big factor in this, but we also talking to all of our, our schools and our community about this. And what, what school districts are finding out, I've spoken, I've spoken to DEI coordinators at Framingham, at Situate, and in other places throughout, is that one person cannot do this work. And what we're hearing from people that we're working with, is one person in the district cannot do this work. It takes, obviously, a village to raise a child. And so what DESI, what people have said to us is, don't just go out and get a DEI coordinator to get a DEI coordinator, you got to do the work. You've got to dig your hands in deep. So, Dr. Williams, I met with, we have a, a contract right now that's working with our district, is Calice Warnham, she was our opening day speaker. She has been terrific. She did groups, two or three weeks ago, with different school, with our, with our school district, at different buildings, went out and spoke to small groups about how to, how to continue to push our movement, and how to, how to engrain ourselves in the work. While that was happening, I also reached out to another program, and Dr. Williams is going to speak about that program tomorrow with Julia, to see how they like to do this. And I also spoke to a third. They ask you not to use their names until you ask them to come in front of your school committee. They do know that, obviously, Dr. Williams knows their names, and Dr. Williams and I will meet with them privately before we bring them out. But they do ask you not to use their names until they're brought forward. Calice, we already have a contract, she's terrific, we want to continue with her, and we have other groups on what do we do? Dr. Williams and I did have a conversation about, do we bring the town into this with us? Part as a group, in, in one of our programmings. And because it takes a village to raise a child, and these kids work with our police, they work with our fire, they work with our DPW, and, you know, they hire people, as, as much as I hire people. So should one of the groups be a combined effort of, you know, the principal, just the administration, and the school committee, and the selectmen, and the, and the fire chief, and this? Should we have a group for that? Should we have a group for the teachers? So that they have a person, or that we have a group that we work with, and should there be another group? I just don't want to put somebody in here and say, okay, fix us. Because I don't know what needs to be fixed, because I think we're doing a good job in some areas, we're probably weak in others, but we have a lot of strengths. We have put a lot of time and a lot of effort into DEI, and it's not just about, it's not just, to me, it's not just about race and ethnicity, it is about, it is about socioeconomics, it is about a student with an IEP, a 504, special education, a 504. So I want to make sure that we're doing this the right way, and we're taking our time. And I know that we said by June. These programs, I did speak to one of the companies, they did send me their proposal today. Dr. Williams has the proposal. She's going to talk to Julia tomorrow. I do have the other, I called the other company, and it's not a company, it's a person that might have other people that work with it. But I did speak to them today, they're, we'll send a proposal, Dr. Williams and I will look at it, and then we will bring probably our top two or three to you. There are not, as much as people say there's all these consultants out there, I can tell you this, DESI doesn't recommend all these consultants. Like, people are saying, oh, there's 50,000 consultants out there, but who's the best? And we don't want to bring anybody in. So we are.
Can I just, what you're saying is making me, I just want to make sure. So the, the audit is really, like, to your point, and we've, we had conversations with the subcommittee, as well as, like, I've been a liaison to the CCC too, about like, as a district, you know, I think some people are just like, yeah, get a person in there, exactly like you said. And it was like, we need to be ready, because, to, to talk to this person, to work with them. And so I just want to clarify, the audit is really thinking about what we've done, what we have left to go, and what, what this person or something, or other structures would help, right?
Right. And the consulting group that I'm bringing in, or that we'll bring in front of you, will do, help us do the audit.
Okay, gotcha.
They do the audit. Then if we want them to move us forward, and we stay with them. But you've got to start at one piece.
Yeah.
And if they're going to work with us, I want, I want you to, I want you to be with us when we choose the group for the audit. They might not be the group that comes in as the consultant, but they'll come in and say, these are things. We brought in the deputy superintendent from Brockton. She came and sat with Dr. Williams, myself, and the administrators, early in the year. Sat with us, and first thing she picked out, website. First thing, website. We've already started to change that. We got a grant for communications, we brought somebody in. They've been helping us. We've, we've talked to the company, we may be, we're, we're working on a new website logo, look, new pictures, the way our formatting looks, the way our, our job, our job specifications look, like, she looked at those. The things that Brockton has done that are mi, that are not minor things, but are, are the easy stuff to pick out, to me, that wasn't easy. I'm used to going and saying, I need a math teacher. This is what I need, I need Algebra I, high school. This is what it looks like. To me, on paper, that's an Algebra I teacher. However, after speaking with somebody who does this, this is what she does, came in and said, Liz, this is what it looks like to me. Or told the group, this is what it looks like to me. Let me show you ours. Is you see differences. Right away, you see differences. Right away, it's different, it looks different. So we have been doing the work with our administrative team to see where their heads are at, and what, and they know the way that we're rowing. But I certainly understand what you're saying, I don't mean, we're bringing a consultant to, to do this work, I'm, I'm bringing a consulting group to do, to start with the audit. They do the audit, but yet, then they start to bring you through. And I, they do both. So I'm trying to, I want to make sure that you get to see who we're working with. Calice has been great. Teachers seem to be comfortable with her, to like her, we like her work. She's been, she's been here, gosh.
Four times, three times.
She's coming back, we'll see her again. She's easy for Dr. Williams to get a hold of, we talk to her, we have problems, we, you know, we work things out, we've asked questions. We've even had principals say, can I call her and ask her how to, how to deal with this situation? Which, that's what, that's what we want. That's, that's what we want to do. So those are things we're working on, DEI.
Thanks for clarifying that.
Yep. But yeah, I, it all encompasses, but, yeah.
Any more questions?
Any more clarification?
If, if we're done with the book, I just have a couple of things. The, when's the, the next I Ready reports, when do they come out in the spring?
So next week, May 8th, the window opens for the testing, and usually the testing window is, is a couple of weeks.
Yep.
So, and the reports, as soon as the last kids have tested, the reports are, so I would say by the end of May. I think we come back one more time through the strategic plan for reporting.
You'll get to see the year.
So we'll be able to, to share the, kind of the same report that you saw at the beginning of the year, where their progress was at the beginning with the color coding, to see what it looks like at the end of the year by grade level.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
And Liz, are you still doing the, the meetings with families, school by school?
Uh, the breakfast with the superintendent, or coffee with the superintendent, or dinner with the superintendent, yes. It's in my, it's a, we put my calendar.
Oh, it's in there, okay, great.
But yes, there'll be another host of them coming out.
Oh, super.
So we waited till after April vacation, because there's so much going on, and there'll be a lot going on now, so.
Great, thank you.
And the two parents that always come, I want to thank them.
That's their meeting.
Because they're always there, and always on time.
I would tell you, as I was looking through all the different things in the review, and all the documents, or whatever, when I got to the point of instructional leadership, and it says, practices in all settings reflect high expectations, hard for me to drill down into multiple levels, because I just don't have that access. But I would tell you, the single point that I would refer to is, I think the three principles that we have in place right now, from my perspective, seem to be phenomenal. I mean, they're eloquent, they know what they're doing, seem to be nice people, they seem to be motivated to do what they have to do. I just think, to me, that's, that's the indicator that I say, okay, those guys and gals are in, in great, great shape, so thank you for that. And one of the topics we picked out was under human resources, which was cohesive approach to recruiting, hiring, induction, et cetera, et cetera. I mean, I don't, how does that work? I mean, I know we're in good shape in general for numbers of teachers we have, right? We always need more, right?
We go to job fairs, we've put our name in it, DESI, Dr. Williams going to Bridgewater State in next week, two weeks? Coming up in a couple of weeks. She sits at a table and says, come to EB. Shows what we have, shows the, the positions that we have. We, we are on school, uh, school spring, we are on, I think we put us on, indeed, on some of our.
Didn't you partner with like, a specific, like, DEI focus?
Yes, yep. And we have, we, and that took us a long time to get that company to get back to us. But we, we have put us on everything that we possibly can. I actually spoke to a district superintendent this morning, because we will be hiring a person from their district. That superintendent asked me, did I have somebody that was student teaching here, or in a specific area that they were looking for? We do a lot like that, by saying, hey, you know, I have this young person, I do not have a spot. Jay gets them, once, came over the other day and said, I've, I just got a call, we have somebody, I was at, with Kate Byrne yesterday, she said, I do not need this person, because this person, I'm going to move this person into this person to this person, I think this is a quality candidate, I did, I know that Matt, that Mr. Pauquette is looking. Took that, went back down to Metro School, and I said, there you go, Mr. Pauquette, because he's going to start interviewing next week for, he's got a posi, he's got a few positions that are opening up. So, you know, I, you, I don't know, two weeks ago, I said, you know, if any, if any student is coming home from college, and is going to, going to education, or may thinking about going to education, and wants to teach at this time, or wants to sub, or wants to come in, be a teacher assistant, we need hands. We, we recruit as much as we can. MASC, once in a while, I'll put something up on there, job searches, if we can't get somebody. There's a lot of movement right now, I can tell you. There was a lot of movement in the last, I don't know, couple of weeks in administration. So you're going to start to see a lot of movement. Once that starts, then you'll start to see people shake out, so. But again, we're also looking to diversify our teachers and staff. So I want to make sure that we are hitting many of the areas. You know, when I talk to Brockton, I always ask, do you have a young teacher that, you know, and they, they have a more diversified staff than we do, and I will say, this is what I'm looking for. And if they have somebody that they don't have a spot for, which I can tell you, Brockton's taking everybody that they can right now. They, I mean, there's nobody out. It, it's unfortunate that, uh, education, um, is not at the top of the list right now for kids going into. It's really, it's unfortunate. I'd love to see, I'm hoping that with our new academy that we open for the young teachers, I hope that that helps kids understand that this is a wonderful profession.
Hold on, Gordon?
I'm at the end of my questions.
All done? You did your last one?
I did.
Okay.
I was going to say, Gordon, you can take me out to dinner if you want.
I can keep talking.
Does anybody?
Might be a late dinner.
Any clarification on anything? Okay. What? Yeah. Okay, so, uh, the timeline, well, my question was, I just want to make sure, because, uh, we're slated to give, um, our last meeting before elections is May 9th, and that was the meeting that we're planning on giving her her evaluation at the open meeting. And then, um, May 4th is when the, uh, the superintendent evaluation subcommittee is going to meet to compile the individual evaluations. So, I just want to have the eval, the individual evaluations back in enough time so that the, so if, if we have any questions, um, on something, because sometimes that happens, we have to go back to the individual person who filled out the thing and say, "What, whatever." Sometimes it doesn't match what's on the inside, outside, whatever. So, I was going to ask if...
Ellen, didn't we, didn't we move the May 8th, 9th meeting to May 8th?
May 8th, oh, I'm sorry, yes, I had it in my head from May 9th. But yes, we did, May 8th.
You can thank me for that, Scott. Because I said, you know, it was a good... Difficult. I, I said, "We don't have it an hour before, and then we'll..."
So, um, I wanted to see if we could have the individual evaluations back by May 2nd. That gives us a, May, yeah, it gives us a weekish, and gives you a weekend, at least, if you can't get it on the weekdays. But also, um, it gives a date, May 3rd, if we have any questions before the subcommittee meets on the 4th. Is that, is May 2nd good with everybody? That's what I guess I wanted to...
Yep.
And you're going to send us electronic version, so we can just fill out that one?
Mike, Mike will send you the electronic version.
Thank you.
So, the eval subcommittee's meeting on May 4th at what time?
Uh, six, oh, that's another question I have for you. Thanks for bringing that up. Um, what time would you like to meet, 6:00 or 6:30?
Doesn't make any difference to me.
Um, uh... What?
No, it's fine, sorry.
You want to do 6:30?
Either one is fine.
Uh...
Let's do 6:00.
6:00 is fine, so we're done earlier.
Okay. 6 on 5, 4.
On my computer.
Oh, what?
And, so, and, um...
So, oh, I just want to, can we just vote on the 5? Have everybody have, and then we, they can, um, I wrote myself a note, "To return them either to me or to Mike, so that way, um, they can start to be collected." And then I can just come pick them up and see if we have any questions, and then, uh...
Returned electronically.
Well, we're going to do them electronically, so we can email them to you.
Oh, yeah, that's fine, okay.
Please email, because then we can copy and paste.
Yeah.
We'll go to you, Ellen.
Yes, yes, yes.
So, they'll go to you, Ellen?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, and so, I make a motion to have everybody submit their individual evaluations in to me by May 2nd, by the end of the day, May 2nd. So, like, before you go to sleep at night, that day. So, you have until, like, whatever, 10, 11, whatever time you go to sleep. As long as they're there when I wake up at 5:00 on, on May 3rd, I'm good. Okay, so, I make a motion to have them in by the end of the day on 5:20.
Second.
Motion by Ellen, second by Amanda, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And, um, next up is the new school committee member orientation information. Thank you, I would like to just say, "Thank you, Gordon and Becky, for working on that, and it was a good amount of work."
That's awesome.
Oh, thank you.
It's really cool.
Do you guys need to talk about it? I have some questions, so I don't know if you want to...
No, I just thought we could just do an overview of the thoughts behind it, and then take questions.
Sure.
So, that's why you have that, the first two pages are just the outline, what happens when. And I, I guess I started from having been on different committees, not just this one, but other ones in the town, and other ones professionally. It always concerns me that a new member sits at the table, and they say, "Okay, who votes this way?" And they go, "Wait a minute, I don't even, I don't know people's names, I don't know what we're doing." And so, uh, I just thought it was really important. I, I can't imagine anyone wanting to step onto the committee and not wanting to contribute. And so, I think in order to do that, you need information. Now, granted, there's a lot of information, and one of the challenges was, how do we space this out within a reasonable timeframe, so somebody's not drowned with all this info? It's not perfect, but it's a start. And so, any feedback we get, we'll, we'll tweak and tune. So, I spoke with the town clerk today, uh, before she retired. Asked her about, uh, you'll see, part of the package was that we got from the M A S C, um, website, the challenge of school committee service, and roles and responsibilities of school committees, which I think create a good foundation. And so, what she recommended was that, yeah, they'll hand it out when anyone pulls papers. So, for instance, next January, what the note that, I'd send it over to whoever the town clerk is then. And so, they would have it in their system, so that if somebody pulls papers, they'd say, "Oh, by the way, take a look at this."
Before they even turn them back in.
Yeah.
I'm sorry?
Before they even turn them back in.
You mean their nomination papers?
Yeah.
Yeah, so I mean, if they're serious enough...
So, that they're making an informed decision.
Right, exactly.
Yep.
So, uh, so, that's, uh, the first part of it. The next is that we'd put together, um, sort of a, a generic email that would, uh, Ellen put together a, a generic welcome, that said, "Hey, congratulations, welcome to the committee." Just, "Hey, we know you got elected, good, come join us." Remind them they have to be sworn in at the town hall. I mean, it's all, it's all listed out there, some of the real fundamental things, even that, "Hey, we operate by Robert's Rules of Order." What the heck is that? You might want to, you know, look at that ahead of time. So, even though, you know, this sort of points them in certain directions, it's still on that person to probably do some homework to be, to be ready. But, I mean, they'll be assigned a EBPS emails, uh, address, et cetera, et cetera. And you'll see, one of the things on there is a glossary of terms. And, uh, Liz and Barbara said they, they helped me with the glossary of terms. I sent them over the one from Framingham, but when I looked to it, it looked like maybe they had some things on there that maybe not apply to us, and maybe there's some things we need. So, when I get that back from them, we'll, we'll produce that, so that somebody just has some reference, uh, point. And then, uh, the difficult part is to schedule, um, a meeting. We, we, we targeted one hour before the first, uh, meeting after their, after the election. So, they'd meet with the current chairperson. And for instance, if the chairperson, let's say Ellen wasn't running again, we don't have a chairperson, it would go to the, uh, vice chair. But if she wasn't running, or he wasn't running, then it would have to go to, you know, probably the oldest, not the oldest, God help, the, the longest-tenured person on the committee, um, to meet, just kind of go through some basics, which are listed out there. Then they would meet with Superintendent Legault, and, uh, ultimately, they would meet with the business manager, but probably sometime over the summer. I don't think it's, again, trying to spread this out a little bit to make sense. And, uh, within the first month, there's some more information to go through. And that sort of gives the, the foundational pieces. And there's still work to be done, but I don't want to go any much further until all of you had a chance to look at it and say, "Well, this is missing," or, "I don't think this should be here, I think it should be there," kind of thing, so.
So, you want, does anybody have anything?
Not at the moment, no. Just my thanks.
Yeah.
This is great.
Oh, you're welcome.
So, you're not looking at getting, having this done by the, by the next one or two meetings or something, then, correct?
Yeah, we are.
Well, I think we're going to have at least one new meet, member.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Um, so, do you want me to go over the, the stuff that I wrote down now? Or do you want to go over it, uh, in a, like, later? What do you want to do?
In order for us to complete it, by the time we have any new member, it needs to be now, in order for us to meet again and finalize it, and make sure that a new member has it.
If you want to wait, Liz and I are going to have a late dinner tonight. You can just come along and tag on. Liz won't mind hanging around for that, will you?
Nope.
I mean, our goal is to have this absolutely completed by the election.
Right.
So, that doesn't leave a lot more time for, um, for us to make sure we're taking in all feedback, incorporating it in, and being able to have it completely organized, and then communicate it again, so that any new member would know in, in, like, who's mentoring them, or what their checklist kind of looks like.
Right.
So, that they, they even know, like, what to ask, right? Because we just, fortunately, this year, when we looked at it, between the election and then the next meeting, the new, any new member has 10 days, I think, this time, right? Instead of two days. So, it's, it's easier to accomplish some of this, but, we know that won't be the case every year, but, um, we have a little wiggle time to be able to give any person some opportunities to say, "Okay, let me really take this all in." So, we want to have that done by then.
So, what do you have for thoughts or questions, or...
Okay, well, this, and I was looking at it from, from a perspective of not just this year, like, every year going forward, too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, on the first section where it says, um, you, I know I tried really hard not to pick it apart, but I did go through it. So, um, the first section where it says, "Email initial contact after election."
Yes.
So, um, so unless the person reaches out, unless they, there's some kind of contact, usually it's, uh, administrative assistance, so in the past, it would have been Barbara. This, now it would be Mike.
It would be Mike.
So, um, they, they can't email unless they have contact information, and they don't always get it right away. Like, in the past...
Yeah, the town clerk has it when you...
Yeah.
When you, um...
They have to provide contact information when you pull papers.
Yeah, we looked at that.
Right.
So, would that, at, that information should be available based on when you pull papers, you, I believe, if I remember correctly, provide your contact info. So, it should be available.
Oh, good.
Yep.
And then also, um, must be sworn in at the town clerk's office, so that should come first. That the, the person needs to go and get sworn in, like...
Right, but in the initial contact, that's, you need to, people don't know they need to be sworn in at the town clerk's office. They need to be told.
So, that's, so that's in the welcome email, I believe? Like, so in theory, someone is elected, and within a 24-hour time period, they receive from the chair, "Here's your welcome, and here's, it's very important information you need to know," right? If you have three-day turnaround for a first meeting, like, you're, okay, make sure you're there Monday morning, so this...
I was, I think Scott was in that boat.
This, and I was, too. So, this email coming out is the responsibility of the chair to say, "Okay, this is a new member, and I am extending that welcome, and here's important information," right? Because as the, as the chair, or, or the delegated person, it's, "Hey, I'm taking here for you, I am a mentor for you right now. You don't know what you're walking into, and that's what this is." So, this email goes out quickly.
Yeah, well, I thought, we set this up so it's a generic, uh, information, that if Mike has it in his computer, once he knows who wins the election, he hits Send, and they get this generic package. And then they get more specifics when they meet, meet with the chairperson. So, for instance, on the must be sworn in at the town clerk's office, we'd make the note before first meeting.
Which is scheduled for...
Yeah.
X, Y, Z, whatever, yeah.
Okay. Sorry, what else did you have, Ellen?
Well, so I think it should be, I think there's stuff that could be written on. So, I don't know how you, if you plan on just having this bulleted list, or if you plan on, like, adding text to it or not?
Well, yeah, this is just for us to say, "Okay, all this will be in the package."
Oh, okay. So, the charting the course dates, times, and locations, they're usually on the M A S C.org website.
Right. So, what I would think is, I, if, if it was me, I would work with Mike and say, "Hey, Mike, I looked it up. The, the earliest charting the course and closest, because there aren't a lot close to us, is like in June, I think."
And which was easy enough, because we did that together. And so, whomever is, uh, taking responsibility for this first email says, "Here's charting the course."
Yeah.
Oh, so then, this, this last, uh, part in that group, and it actually is the next bullet, about, um, meeting with the chairperson one hour prior to the first meeting after the election. So, are you, I just wanted to get clarification of that. Are you talking about meeting prior to the elec, prior to the meeting? Or exactly one hour?
Well, what we try to do is, it's hard to, even that, you don't know what the person's availability is. So, we just wanted to put a stake in the ground and say...
Oh, right.
Okay, at least, they know their first meeting is such and such a date at 6:30, whatever. So, at 5:30, they know they have to be here to meet with the chairperson or somebody to kind of just go through some more generic...
Like, hey, we vote on these things, this is what this means.
My only concern was that we don't know if the availability of that person is...
I know.
But you would be able to reach out to that person.
Oh, right, and figure something out. So, so, well, my only, my only thing was just to not pigeonhole into the one hour prior, just like, any time prior to the...
At least one at, one hour prior. Like, I mean, it's not going to be any later than one hour prior.
If the chairperson so chooses to say, "Can we meet sooner than that?" Then we would trust that any chair could say, "Hey, let's do this another time." It was to ensure, at a time that a new person would say, "Hey, oh, my gosh, this is going to be time-consuming," that they would say, "Well, at least I've marked off at 6:30 on May 9th, I'm going to a meeting. Oh, all right, well, could you do an hour earlier?" It was just, it was something that offered opportunity for that.
I like what Lauren said, when she said, "At least," I think, um, maybe we could...
But this isn't a policy, like, we're not locked into this. This is a flexible document.
So, what we could do is, in addition to this, send them the chair's contact info, say, "If you want to reach out to the chair and schedule something that's convenient for you, here's the contact info, just reach out to them, her, him, or whatever." Okay?
So, in the next, so in that next section?
Yeah.
Conflict of interest is missing from the list. It's, um, open meeting laws, state ethics, and conflict of interest.
Okay.
And, um, what?
I love that training. Anyway, not really.
The definite, this, my definition and explanation of key topics like warrants, circupation, school choice, chapter 70 funding, et cetera, I was going to suggest that be in the glossary also.
Yeah, some of the stuff, they're not going to, I mean, this is going to be before their first meeting, so they're not going to need to be holding all this information.
Oh, right, it's a lot...
But, you're going to say, "Hey, these are some key topics. We'll, we'll talk about it later," but, okay.
In the section where it says, "More information should be reviewed with the chairperson within the first month after the election," I was going to say, um, to add this in text form, to have it in writing, the list of the subcommittees and their purpose, like that, to be written out what the subcommittees do.
Yeah, so, good point, because now I need the subcommittees to print out what their roles and responsibilities are.
And then, um, also, the district, district mission statement, we have that in writing, and district's educational philosophy, that's in, like, this should all be in, like, a text, in text form, or... form, or-
That's part of the packet.
Yeah, it's part of the packet.
It'd be there.
That's it, that's all I have for now.
Okay.
I have one thing.
What packet are you referring to?
The new member orientation packet?
The one you're making?
Yeah, I don't know.
Yeah, I didn't get one of those.
That's the whole point, we're creating it, right?
The packet is gonna be created out of this.
Oh.
Did you?
Gotcha. Yeah, I wasn't visioning-
Need a minute?
I wasn't visioning a packet. So that's not a word that I-
Well, it's just a generic term. They'll get all this information.
Gotcha, okay.
Oh.
I'm sorry, Lauren, you said you had a-
Just, in the information that you're gonna include, I think it would be helpful to have a description of the different roles of the school committee members, like, what does the chair do, what does the vice chair do?
Yeah.
So on and so forth.
Yeah, I get, let's see, that's on the list of current people. But I would also say, I don't know how you're doing it going forward, but I would suggest, having been through a couple of these, the reorganization and the assignment to the subcommittees, I would say that should be not at the first meeting. I mean, all that stuff doesn't have to be done right then and there. Plus, you give time to talk to people about, hey, I can't do this, I can do that, kind of thing.
These are the next one, isn't it? But you need the chair immediately, you need the-
Oh, no, you need the officers-
It's in our policy manual that we, I'm pretty sure it's there in the policy manual, that what we do on the reorg meeting, that it all gets, it all gets situated that meeting.
Well, I, okay, I didn't know that. So my suggestion would be, let's take a look at that, and move it at least to the second or maybe the third meeting, just so that you have time for everybody to figure out, okay, I can do this, or I can-
I don't think he's talking about the chairperson.
No, no, I know, I know what, he's talking about subcommittees.
The subcommittees, yeah.
But then if we wait until another, I mean, maybe waiting one meeting, that's gonna hold us up from being able to do anything as subcommittees.
But, yeah, but I don't know what subcommittee has to do anything at that point in time. Budget subcommittees all set, the, you know-
Super vouchs not gonna be all set, and policy's not all set.
Well, the super vouch isn't gonna happen then.
Well, so, one thing that I did bring up was for the super vouchs, so we're gonna have to start talking about goals for next year. So that was something that I was gonna make sure, or whoever, we have to put it on the May, the next, one of the May meetings, probably the May, the second May meeting or something. And-
Yep.
So I think it would put us at, behind the eight ball if we didn't-
Well, maybe we target that one subcommittee and say, let's get this set here, and then we'll fill in the rest of the next ones. At least that was my thought. I'll go whichever way you want to go.
The other thing is, as we go through this, it's gonna become really, like, that to me is a key thing, that whoever the chair is meeting before that first meeting is, here's what to expect in your first meeting. This is the reorg meeting. Here's the list of the committees. Let's talk through what that means. Do you like to look at budgets? Maybe you want to be on budget, you know? Like, something like that, I think, would be really key, if that's what we're doing this year, because we're probably not gonna change that policy in the next month.
Right.
Then that would be, I think, really important to be. And that's like, that's what the chair did. When I joined, you know, we definitely didn't have all of this, but it was like, hey, here's the list, think of what you might like to do. Have a first and a second choice type of thing.
Yeah. Yeah, that's all I'm trying to get to, to make it more reasonable, rather than having to, I agree, there might be one or two that, yeah, let's get those set right away. But there are other ones probably can wait for, not forever, but just another meeting or two, because, again, there's just so much. Like, wow, what just happened? But the majority of the committee is gonna have been veteran enough to have been through it, so it's not that surprising, so. Okay. All right. Anything else? Anyone?
I'll just type my personal opinion on this. I think, I think the email's fantastic, and I would have loved it, like, when I first was elected, because as you all know, I was pretty in the dock for a few weeks, I didn't even know about the first meeting. I think part of that should include, like you mentioned, some of the first email initial contact. But I would be a little more selective in what we include, because I know for me, this could just be me, if you sent all of this to me, I probably wouldn't have shown up. Because this is a lot for a person that's brand new, you're learning a lot of things, there's a lot of demands here, not demands, but there's just a lot of topics, I think it could be overwhelming. And I think that your first email, this email's perfect. I think this should be a second page, it maybe has, you know, you have to go to the town clerk's office, we're going to give you an email address, just some to-dos, and that way they know. And then, the first meeting you're gonna attend is May 16th. Please meet with the chairperson an hour before, and then she'll go over these things as much as we can provide, because we're not gonna have the meeting schedule yet.
Right.
So I would, I think all this is necessary, but not right away, and I think we should probably curtail it to be brief.
Yeah, we did, we pared it down. I agree, it might be still too much. But what I thought was on here, like, the glossary of terms can wait, that kind of thing, that's more than you probably need. But to know at least the meeting schedule to take you out to the end of the current fiscal year.
Yeah.
Okay, these are the next three meetings, know that. Know that, hey, here's your EBPS email. I try to make it as generic as possible, but if we can cut it down further, I agree with you, I don't want to overwhelm them.
Yeah. I think most of the things in your initial contact, I think, are perfect and very appropriate for it that first. But I think it's the, all the things on the meet with the chairperson, I think it's good for Ellen to go over those things and give them a rough idea of what this is. But I think if you start throwing out this committee and that committee, and this responsibility, they're gonna just say, this is great, let me go to the restroom real quick, and they're never gonna come back. So, that's my only advice. But I appreciate all the work that was put in, so, I know, that wasn't an offense.
Why didn't I think of that?
You know, and discussion with the chair.
I just think we need to be careful with, meet with the business manager before the first meeting of the new school year. I, maybe for me particularly, I'm very protective of my time during the day for like work-work.
Yeah.
So if you were to tell me I have to meet, I'd probably say, I don't know if I can do that, because I have a nine-to-five, and I can't just jump over to the office to meet with somebody for an hour. And I've never done that. I don't, I don't know if it's really necessary, but I think it could be great, so I don't want to like remove it. But I just think we need to be very careful of, not everybody in this committee is retired or able to come and go. A lot of us are kind of locked into a nine-to-five, Monday through Friday, and don't have the bandwidth to do other things. We just need to be cognizant of that.
Oh, absolutely. And what I wanted to make sure we touched on is, our three responsibilities are budget, superintendent vouch, and policy. And so if we don't touch on those, and budget, God knows, you probably talk more about budget than anything else. And so maybe we leave it between, coordinate something between you and John Shea, or whatever, the new member and John Shea, maybe they do the same thing. They come in an hour before, you know, the meeting in August or something, just to kind of start to get a background, and start to know who John is, and understand what's on the table, kind of thing. So, yeah, I agree with you, that it wouldn't be set in stone, it would just be, hey, this would be a good thing to get addressed. Because don't forget, if they're lucky enough, quote-unquote, to go to a charting of the course, I mean, all this stuff just gets dumped on you, and it'd be nice to be able to come and say, oh, wait a minute, John, can you explain to me what this did? Or reach out to Superintendent Lago and say, I don't understand this piece, or the chairperson, or whoever it may be. So, yeah, I agree with you. I want, that's one of our concerns, was like, whoa, this is a lot of stuff. But if you just say, oh, welcome to the committee, as an extreme example, then you're not doing service. So I agree, we want to make sure, if we can stretch it out further and reduce, you know, the data dump, so to speak. But if the idea is to get this person up to speed as quickly as possible, to be a contributing member to the committee, rather than going home the first night and go, holy mackerel, I don't even understand what just happened. So.
I think a lot's gonna fall on the chairperson for that first meeting, just to kind of walk through some basics. That way they don't feel like probably many of us felt that first night, where you're kind of like, yeah, I don't really know what's going on here, but I'll just nod and try not to look dumb.
And-
Which is exactly the point. And when you look at, right, like responsibilities of chairs, or you pull those things, right, that's exactly it, right? Like this mentor of, here's what you're walking into, and here's the information you need to know. So absolutely, we went round and round about how to tailor some of this and keep it focused that way. And it does a lot fall to the chair. And I, which is why I kind of paused about the packet idea, because I was like, oh, well, this is like a checklist to like, hey, just just make sure it gets done.
Yeah.
Right? Not a prescription of, do this now.
Yeah.
Right? It's a, these are all important things that in that first few months of being on the committee, you're gonna hear about, and you should know. But it's not some tailored, August 1st, make sure that checklist, you have done that, state ethics, well, that actually is one, right?
[laughing]
Right? Like, make sure you're not reviewing all meeting agendas. It's not a prescription, it's a, make sure you just know it. And the timelines are not also a prescription, it's just make, just, this would be a helpful conversation. You will thrive best in this role to do these things.
Right.
Right? So it's not handing you, new member, here's another 37-page packet of information to go through, because we've all been there, and you'd be like, okay, later, right? So the personalization of a conversation hopefully makes that a better experience for a new member.
And don't get me wrong, I'm not advocating this, but one of the things that had occurred to me is that, wouldn't it be good, perhaps, to go to candidate's night, and to be in the audience and ask a question, say, do you have any idea how much goes into being on the school committee? Because it always shocks me-
Morning, don't go to candidate, no, I'm just kidding, just kidding, please go.
It always shocks me when people say, well, yeah, I don't, I'm here for these meetings. It's like, well, there's more to it, and that's why the subcommittees come into play, and, you know, getting your homework done. So, I'm not, I'm not gonna do that. But some people might be good, well-served by that, and say, oh, I didn't, I didn't think about that, you know? So, because, you know, there is a lot to be done.
So I, one statement, one question. So is there gonna be another iteration of this coming for the May 9th meeting, a May 8th meeting?
Well, we'll meet again and take in these changes, and, yeah, have one more draft of it, so you can take a look at it.
Because I guess my, I was envisioning with this stuff, like, okay, school, so way back when I joined, Barbara would give, like, the operating protocols, the goal, whatever. So I don't, I was envisioning having the, like, a little packet of papers, like the operating protocols, not necessarily executive session rules and regulations, but that's in the law book, that we can like print that up, too. School committee goals, that's on a piece of paper. There's some things here that I would like take out and put in a little group, like stapled together or something, just to have, because I think it would be helpful.
Well, yeah, as an example, as the current chair, you would be the one to say, here's our goals.
Right.
You know? Here's our, I mean, they'll all be printed out.
It's not a normal thing. The current superintendent won't be.
Yeah. And, and remember, we have a drive. We have an electronic repository, that once we put this stuff together once-
Right.
We click a button, and it shares for everyone.
Right.
So.
And what was the other one?
The other one was, what was the other one? I knew I was gonna forget it. Hold on one second, I gotta think. That was the main thing about having another iteration of this. Oh, I know what it was. So, as far as the subcommittees, so, so like the policy subcommittee, we were kind of derailed because of the server being down, and so there's a whole couple of pages, like five pages or something, of policies that need to be gone through. So if the policy subcommittee doesn't get reorged on that day, it's just gonna hold us up longer, too.
Okay.
So you want to put that out there.
But that's particular to this year. That's not like-
Right.
-general.
Yeah, no, that's fine. That's fine, yeah. That makes sense.
And I don't feel like doing them in July.
I don't think anyone does.
No.
All right. All right, thanks. So then-
Thank you, Bo.
We'll, we'll meet, well, I have a late dinner, maybe after that, and we'll get drinks, and we can do this tonight.
Thank you, talk yourself out of this dinner.
Way, thank you.
Are you here for public comment? No? You're our sole, sole audience member. We appreciate that you're still sitting here at 8:30.
One for school committee.
I did that.
I already tried. I've already tried to solicit her. She has served.
So is there anything else about the new member orientation? Okay. At this time, we'll move on to the action items. At this time, I take a motion to approve the minutes from the April 11th school committee meeting.
So moved.
Moved by Amanda.
Second.
Second by Scott. All in favor?
Aye.
I'm abstaining.
At this time, I take a motion to approve accounts payable warrant 43 SV dated April 19th of '23.
So moved.
Moved by Amanda.
Second.
Second by Lauren. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
It was a rando. Throw it in there.
I wanted to share the second.
Little zinger.
Selfish.
At this time, I would take a motion to approve accounts, excuse me, payroll warrant 42 PS dated April 12th of '23.
So moved.
Moved by Amanda.
Second.
Second by Scott. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, it's unanimous. I take a motion to approve a grade two field trip request to Roger Williams Zoo in Rhode Island on Friday, June 2nd, from the central school principal, Mrs. Catherine Byrne.
So moved.
Moved by Amanda.
Second.
Second by Scott. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, it's unanimous. I would take a motion to approve the request from Mrs. Jennifer Lonigan. She's Gordon W. Mitchell School Instructional Support Assistant, to present her son Rory F. Lonigan his diploma at the graduation ceremony for the class of 23 on Friday, June 2nd, '23.
So moved.
Moved by Amanda.
Second.
Second by Scott. All in favor?
Aye.
And at this time, I would take a motion to approve the request from former school committee member Trista Higgins to present her son Zachary Higgins his diploma at the graduation ceremony for the class of 23 on Friday, June 2nd, '23.
So moved.
Moved by Amanda.
Second.
Second by Gordon. All in favor?
Aye. I, I saw this, and the first one makes sense, she works in the school, the second one is a former school committee member, obviously we all know and worked with her. Is there a concern that being, someone says, oh, I was on the committee 10 years ago, can I do it? Like, it's, then, we were very strict about, there was a woman that came here that wanted to enroll her child that was a day older than the cutoff. We were like, nope, the rule's the rule. I'm not aware of a rule for this.
Oh, we have, so it's in our policy manual, and it says, previous school committee members can deliver a-
And there's no-
No time limit.
Okay. Right?
No, we actually had someone who was a previous school committee member, but also an employee. I think it was a few years back, they gave their, somebody, grandchild or something, their diploma. They could, they could have actually been on the school committee at the time, but I don't think so. I don't know.
Are you an I? Do we need to?
I'm an I, yeah.
Okay.
I just wanted the clarification on that, because I just, I always worry about opening up something that could lead to someone coming and say, hey, I was in this school 28 years ago, and my great-grandson, it's not who I've met twice, I just, you know, I didn't know how big this could get, and it sounds like it's not an issue, so.
I would just note that we don't have a lot of perks as school committee members. That's the one we have.
I already asked to give my son a diploma, and I saw others do it last year that were on the committee, and no one came forward that was previously on the committee to ask for that. I didn't know if this was the first time, but it sounds like it's not, so.
No, but it's-
That's why people run, to be honest.
I would see it, doesn't it?
Yeah, that's why I did it. I'm out of here like the day after that.
In the time that I've been on the committee, I haven't seen it happen often.
I'm gonna have that dinner, and then-
For the long night.
So can we do, all in favor? We kind of got derailed.
Yeah.
Aye.
Thank you. At this time, I would take a motion to approve the generous donation from the Friends of the East Bridgewater Commercial Club in the amount of $400 for scholarship assistance to eligible East Bridgewater junior senior high students attending Project Contemporary Competitiveness, PCC, or Summer Science Academy at Bridgewater State University. Donation will, to be deposited into the Summer Enrichment Program Scholarship Donations Account, 26330-714-4850.
So moved.
Moved by Amanda.
Second.
Second by Scott. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. That's nice, a nice donation. At this time, I would take